Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the meeting of June 9th to order for the Thousand Oaks City Council, and I'm going to ask the scouts from Troop 754 to come down and help me say the Pledge of Allegiance. These boys are here this evening to observe the city council in action. Right, boys? Come on over here. Very much. Thank you, scouts. Now, if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Price.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
I'm here. All right, thank you. And we did have a closed session. Our Assistant City Attorney, Heher, would like to make an announcement about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14 was moved to the beginning of the agenda. The closed-session item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9(c). There were two cases. The decision to initiate litigation was authorized in one of those cases. The specifics of the case will be subject to public disclosure once action has formally commenced unless to do so would jeopardize our ability to effectuate service of process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Heher. I'm going to go to the podium now for special presentations. All right. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite Mark Lawyer down to the podium with me. Mark is with Ventura Regional Sanitation District. He's the general manager. And here's Mark. Here he comes. Mark's going to give us an update on the district activities. Evening, Mark.
Mr. Mayor.
All yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Mark Lawyer, I'm the general manager for Ventura Regional Sanitation District. And every couple of years, I get out to say hi to everybody and just let you know who we are. Some of you may or may not know who we are. What we do have is, I have a packet that we've passed around. I'm not going to go through this. It's just for your perusing and just to let your staffs familiar with us. And it's just pretty much to let you know we're here. But who we are, we are a public agency. We're established in 1970 under the Health and Safety Code. But what's different about our district that's unique for a public agency is we have no tax base at our district. So everything, we function, even though we're a public agency, we function just like a private-sector business. We have to compete for work, and all of our work is based on our rates, and the only revenue stream that we get is from our services rendered and the rates we charge at our landfill. And so that's pretty much how our council or our board is made up. We have a nine-member Board of Directors. Eight of them are from the 10 cities in the county. The two that do not participate is Moore Park and Simi Valley. Currently, Councilmember Price is representing the City of Thousand Oaks on our board. And the ninth seat is represented by, it's on a rotating basis with some of the other special districts. There are six other special districts that participate, and they rotate their membership on our board. With that being said, again, you can look through this. Currently, the city's not utilizing very little of our services, but they are in here. A city of your size typically, you're a full-service city. You have all your own services. You generally don't need us. Some things, you might use us for specialty areas, sometimes on an emergency basis. The biggest asset that we have is the landfill. Our landfill is located up between the cities of Santa Paul and Fillmore, and we do receive about half the tonnage in the entire county at the Tollent Road landfill. So with that, that's pretty much us in a nutshell. We do provide a wide range of services, but again, your staff's fully aware of all the services we're providing you. And you have used us, you do use us periodically, but it just, it comes and goes, and it just depends on where the city is and what your needs are. But we're always happy to help out. And so we just, the board asked me to come out every once in a while and just make sure you, you kind of have a face to the, to the district. And that's what I'm here for tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, nope.
I'll certainly let the other board members know that you actually showed up here. Thank you, Mark.
(laughing) Well, thank you. All right, thank you. You have a nice evening. Thanks for inviting me.
Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Councilmember Price, for representing us on the Ventura Regional Sanitation District Board. Next, we have Kevin Wilson, our City Landscape Maintenance Supervisor here this evening. And we are very fortunate in this city to have community involvement. It's one of our strong suits. And Community Involvement has assisted in the beautification of our city that will last for years to come. And to honor these volunteers, we're going, tonight, we're going to present them with the Oak Leaf Awards, which are awarded for excellence in volunteer community service and street scape beautification. Kevin's going to tell us a little bit about those awards and who we are honoring this evening. Hi, Kevin.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Honored to be here tonight. Every year, the city's Public Works Department works with community volunteers to perform neighborhood enhancement projects throughout the city. The projects typically coincide with Arbor Earth Day and can include volunteers from as few as one to as many as several hundred. This year, the city was honored to work with nearly 300 community volunteers from the following organizations: St. Julie Billiard Catholic Church, the Islamic Center of Caneo Valley, Trup Real Estate, Westlake Village, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and Ojai resident Angelo Spadino. Thanks to these organizations, project organizers, and volunteers, together we painted nearly 4,000 linear feet of safety rail fence along the Foxmore Flood Plain and Westlake, spread 25 cubic yards of wood chips in Thousand Oaks and Newberry Park, implanted 10 Chant Claire pear trees along Tooluma Avenue, 17 24-inch box-sized strawberry trees along Kimber Drive, 32 24-inch box trees, strawberry trees along Gainesboro Road, and 50 valley oak tree seedlings grown and donated by Mr. Spadino near the intersection of Hillcrest and Venti Park Road. The volunteers' efforts not only promoted community involvement, but provided environmental awareness that have provided an immediate beautification and enhancement to the surrounding neighborhoods that will last for years to come. Tonight, the City of Thousand Oaks is honored to recognize the time and efforts all volunteers donated this year by presenting each organization with the city's Oak Leaf Award for excellence in volunteer community service and street beautification. At this time, I'd like to invite the following project organizers down to the podium. From Trup Real Estate, Westlake Village, Gail Coy and Brooke James.
(inaudible)
Darrell, are you here tonight? It looks like unfortunately Darrell wasn't able to make it. From the Islamic Center of Caneo Valley, Gazella Kazee. Like Gazella wasn't able to meet, make it either. That's unfortunate. From the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Craig Nielsen, Larry Bagby, and Paul Manwaring. Simmons. And the, last but not least, the gentleman who dedicated a year of his life germinating and growing valley oak tree seedlings for us, Mr. Angelo Spadino. And I, and members of city council, and I promise you that we'll be here next year handing out more awards. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. I'll tell you, it's volunteers that really make this city work. And there's a statistic in America that about 50% of people volunteer at least once a week for a worthy cause, and I think here in Thousand Oaks, that percentage is considerably higher. So thank you, volunteers, for helping to beautify our city. Next, we have... We have Elaine Hagen, Vice President of Caneo Open Space Foundation. Here she is. Hello, Elaine.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's nice to be here again this year. Thank you, Mayor Adam and councilmembers. The Caneo Open Space Trails Education Days is a field trip for CVUSD 5th grade students sponsored by COSF, the open space agency. In case you're not familiar with it, the students experience an intensive day of open space and environmental education in Wildwood Park. 16 elementary schools and 1,345 5th grade students participated this year, and nearly 90 volunteers and staff put in about 1,000 hours preparing for, putting on, and doing follow-up for the program. And the Caneo Open Space Foundation is pleased to provide financial support. Also, we're very happy that we were chosen as beneficiaries for a Caneo Endowment Fund Award, and we really appreciate that as well. The award helps pay for Trails Education Days. Anyway, we thank you and really appreciate your continued support through the past 24 years. Next year will be our 25th anniversary Trails Education Days program. It's amazing. Anyhow, after the program, the students are invited to participate in a letter-writing contest. And this year, we received about, we received 866 letters, and that's 2/3 of the student body who attended, which is a pretty good ratio, given all the other requirements and everything that the students deal with. Every year, two winners are chosen from each of the participating schools, and then district-wide, five grand prize winners are chosen. And I'm happy to introduce these winners to you. Sadly, because of conflicts with scheduling, with illness, and probably with traffic, only two of the students were able to be here tonight. I'll let you know, first Eric Berger of Westlake Hills was not able to attend. Sammy Edwards also of Westlake Hills, and Cory Witt of Lang Ranch Elementary were not able to attend, and they all were really disappointed because they couldn't be here. But we do have two of the grand prize winners, and I'd like to ask each of them to come up to the podium. First is Max Wagner of Westlake Hills Elementary, and second, Tairani Udayakumar of Wildwood. And can you hold up your certificates? Very good. So it's pretty amazing, five out of 866. These are pretty special kids who do some pretty darn good work. And I just wanted to say that the winning letters will be posted at the Caneo Open Space Foundation website, which is cosf.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Needless to say, open space is highly valued in the City of Thousand Oaks. It's great that you're able to teach the kids to appreciate it and to write about it as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. And now, I'd like to have our Cultural Affairs Director Barry McCombe join me at the podium.
Actually, I'm sitting off to your side.
Oh, there he is.
So I'm going to present from here tonight.
Barry is going to regale us with our performance review for the 2015-16 season, and I hear it's quite spectacular.
We have some great artists this year.
All right, Barry, go to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sorry to believe that it's already that time of year again for us to provide you with a sneak peek of some of the artists that are coming to the Civic Arts Plaza for our 2015-16 season. We're actually going to start tonight with our headline concert series. And since we've started bringing in more commercial artists, one of the challenges we have is that we are contractually precluded from announcing some of them until later in the year. So what you're going to see tonight is just a small selection of some of the artists that will be here. Most of these will be performing at the Civic Arts Plaza between now and December, but I will be back in September to announce some additional artists to our season, and also back again in next December to announce some artists that we have confirmed for the spring but that we can't announce to you yet. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. Although this first artist is not part of our new season, he's actually ending our current season, and that's Hannibal Buress. Hannibal is a former writer of Saturday Night Live and now stars as a cast member of Broad City on Comedy Central. He's going to be performing here in the Sheer Forum. And over the last year and a half, we've actually started to build up a very significant comedy series here in our small theater. And many of the comedians that now perform here traditionally play at larger venues. Hannibal actually recently sold out the Wiltern in Los Angeles, but coming to Thousand Oaks, he's going to play our small room. About two weeks ago, we had Janine Garofalo perform here, who also traditionally plays a larger room. But we've started to really build up a reputation of what a great comedy room this is, and you'll see that in the coming season, we're going to have a lot more comedians performing here. Hannibal, we actually confirmed last Friday, so this is a very last-minute booking. He's actually here June 20th, so it's two weeks' notice that he'll be here. He went on sale today, so if you're going to buy tickets, now's the time to do it. But moving into our new season, we're actually kicking off on August 7th with Pat Benatar and Neil Giraldo. What you may not know is they live locally. They are actually celebrating their 35th anniversary touring, and this will be their very first time performing here at the Civic Arts Plaza. Following Pat is An Evening with Chris Isaac. Chris is one of the perennial favorites of Thousand Oaks audiences. The last two engagements that he's performed here have been during the holiday with his holiday show. This is the first time that he'll be bringing his band for a summer play, so I'm sure he'll have lots of new surprises in his show. Talking of comedy, we have lots of comedy that is coming in our large theater as well. Brian Regan is no surprise to Thousand Oaks audiences. He's usually here about every couple of years. He's returning once again with his very unique observations of life's most mundane situations, and he'll be here on September 10th. Following Brian, we have The Beach Boys, and their Made in America Tour. Beach Boys have not played the Civic Arts Plaza in 15 years, so it's been long overdue to bring them back. They are currently on sale and selling very well, so we would say if you're a Beach Boys fan, it's better to purchase your tickets sooner rather than later. Ron White, much like Brian Regan, we see every couple of years, he's actually got an all-new stand-up show that he's bringing back called The Nutcracker Tour, and he'll be here on September 26th. Some of you may remember Ron Banesse as a local performer who played for free every chance he got around town. And since then, he's gone on to become a worldwide sensation with his Spanish flamenco style. He's had several very popular specials on PBS, and it's been about three or four years since he's played the Civic Arts Plaza. He's coming back with his newer, New Springs of Passion Tour, and he'll be here on October 2nd. This is probably one of our favorite bookings. Tim Minchin is probably a comedian that many of you don't know. He really has a background based in a lot of different arenas. If you're a fan of Broadway music, you might know the show Matilda, and Tim actually wrote the music for that. He incorporates a lot of musical comedy in his shows. He was also on a hit series on Showtime. He's seen frequently on shows like David Letterman, now Jimmy Kimmel. He's also an artist that typically would be playing a large theater, but he's actually going to be in Los Angeles filming a movie for DreamWorks this fall, wanted to play a small room, and selected us as that location, so we're very excited to have him. Also, following up as part of our Sheer Comedy Series is Wendy Ledman. Wendy's had a long, very successful career. Most recently, she was a finalist on America's Got Talent, but she's had specials on HBO and Showtime and been on every late-night talk show that she can think of. If you joined us for our free 20th anniversary concert last September, Wendy was one of the performers that did a short set at that concert. Afterwards, we had a lot of people come up to us and really encourage us to bring her back with her full show, so she'll be here on November 14th. For Thanksgiving weekend, we're bringing Under the Street Lamp. Under the Street Lamp is probably kind of a cross between the Tenors that we had last Thanksgiving weekend and Straight No Chaser and the Midtown Men who were here last spring. They have their roots in Broadway. Several of the members were in the cast of the Frankie Valli show that was on Broadway. They have PBS specials, and we'll have them again on Saturday, November 28th. Mythbusters is a show many of you might remember from the Discovery Channel. It's a series where Adam Savage and Jamie Hyman use elements of science to test the validity of rumors, myths, movie scenes, and news stories. This is actually Jamie's farewell tour. It's been a number of years since they've been here, and we're going to be one of the final stops that they have. They'll be here on Sunday, December 6th. An artist I think everybody will be happy to see coming is Jay Leno. This will be the first time that Jay's ever performed at the Civic Arts Plaza. He's probably one of America's favorite comedians, and he'll be here the Sunday after Christmas. And then, we're bringing back a new U.C.E. show this year with Cherry Pop and Daddies, plus a number of special guests who will be performing with them. If you are a fan of Big Bad Voodoo Daddy or Royal Crown Review, we had Big Bad Voodoo Daddy a couple of years ago. That was a huge hit. They're cut from the same mode. We actually saw them perform back in New York earlier this year. We anticipate they'll probably do a special salute to Frank Sinatra as part of their engagement this year, but it guarantees for a very big evening. So this is a little bit of a sampling of what's coming up in our headline series. Again, we'll be making other announcements for artists that will play and be playing in the fall as well as into the spring, so I would suggest that you visit our website and keep up to speed on additions as they're announced. Moving on to our resident companies. Cabrillo Music Theater has a great season next year. They'll be kicking off with Damn Yankees during the World Series time in October. They're going to produce A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to the Forum right here in the Sheer Forum, so that's probably appropriate. Children of Eden is a newer show based on Adam and Eve, more contemporary. And then they'll be finishing up their season with Disney's Little Mermaid, if it's anything like their Mary Poppins production was this year. It's definitely going to be a not-to-miss production. Then we move on to New West Symphony. They have a number of great guest artists this year, too, that I would point out is obviously the return of our locally grown Andrew Janz, who's now a in-demand international performer. And then their final concert of the season features Stuart Copeland, who you would not typically expect to perform with the symphony orchestra. Many of you will know him as the drummer for the band The Police. So that should be a very interesting performance. Pacific Festival Ballet has three productions next season. This summer, they'll be bringing a production of The Wizard of Oz with their young dancers here in the Sheer Forum in August. Their annual Nutcracker takes place December 19th to 20th. They like to say it's the only nutcracker with a guaranteed chance of snow on the audience. If you've attended, then you'll know what we mean by that. And then their Storybook Ballet next spring on May 21st is Peter Pan. Moving on to our signature series, the first is our Distinguished Speaker Series. I think they have a great lineup of international political leaders, entertainment icons such as John Cleese, Martha Stewart, but the one I think that will be probably the most interesting that most people won't know who he is, and that's Platon, who will be here in February. He's actually a world-renowned photographer who specializes in shooting world leaders in very, in a very unique fashion, and part of what he'll be doing is showing those pictures, but also sharing the background of his experiences working with each of those world leaders. And then finally, is our Professional Broadway Series. Jersey Boys will finally be coming to Thousand Oaks for the first time. We've waited a long time, so they'll be here in February. Other productions are the great holiday show Elf, and then a Frank Sinatra salute with the Rat Pack Christmas, Flashdance in January, and then finishing their season with Reg Time. Many of these shows are currently on sale, but the majority will go on sale on June 20th. And if you watch your mailbox next week, our season brochure should be arriving, and if you don't get one at home, you can pick one up here at the theater. Also, again, we would encourage you to stay connected to find out new shows as they're added to our schedule, either through our website page, by signing up for our Facebook account, or following us on Twitter. And we look forward to seeing you at the theater. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCombe. Another great season on tap. They just keep getting better and better. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go to public comments. If you would announce those, please, for me. Ms. Lawrence?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Eight people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. I'm going to announce the names now. First up is our library director, Nancy Schramm, along with Margaret Douglas, I do believe, followed by Jackson Piper. Evening, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, members of the city council, city staff. This evening, I am so pleased to announce our 2015 Thousand Oaks Reads One City One Book selection. Christina Enriquez's novel, The Book of Unknown Americans, tells the story of the Rivera family who leave their happy lives in Mexico behind and come to the United States, armed with only their visas and the belief that their beloved damaged daughter will have the resources and opportunities she needs. Each year, our Thousand Oaks Library One City One Book Committee works hard to find the book that fulfills our requirements. Our standards include high literary quality, universal themes that appeal to a wide range of readers, available in multiple formats such as books that are in audio and paperback, discussable book that is likely to spark provocative discussions, and a book that lends itself to creative programming related to the book, and author availability and willingness to participate in the author event. And librarian Margaret Douglas is here to tell us a bit more about our 2015 title.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Each autumn, the library staff and community volunteers organize and present the month-long Thousand Oaks Reads One City One Book program, and every year, our momentum keeps growing as library patrons anticipate, attend, and participate in lively discussions of our selected one-city title. 2015 marks the Thousand Oaks Library's ninth citywide reading program, and over the years, we've brought meaningful literature to thousands of readers in our community. This year, we expect nothing less. We'll stock our library shelves with a generous supply of the chosen book. We'll work with dozens of local book clubs and fill our calendar with an energetic and imaginative series of programs, including speakers, musicians, and concerts, film and art events, book discussions, and workshops. It's an amazing lineup that will enhance the experience of reading her book and bringing our community closer together. The Book of Unknown Americans is a story of big dreams, and woven into one family's compelling story are the testimonials of men and women who've come to America from all over Latin America, Mexico, but also Colombia, Panama, Puerto Rico, Guatemala, and more. This fall, we hope that you'll read our book, come to a book discussion meeting, join us for a concert or a film, and connect with your community. We can't wait to welcome you, because when we open a book together, we close it in greater harmony. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you for that information. Next up, we have Jackson Piper, followed by Linda Hillman. Hello, Jackson.
Hello. Thank you, members of the council, for having me here today. I'm a resident of the Venture Park area of unincorporated Ventura County, just outside of Thousand Oaks. I've always considered myself a T.O., city resident, de facto. I'm here to represent the Conejo Valley citizens for Community Choice Energy to request the council's support in the effort to bring community choice energy to this region by supporting a study to see if the community choice energy will benefit the city of Thousand Oaks and the other involved communities in Ventura County and Santa Barbara Counties. Community Choice Energy has proven successful in both Sonoma and Marin Counties up north, and the city of Lancaster has just started operating its own program whereby they bypass the utilities in deciding where their energy comes from. This allows them to deliver potentially greater amounts of sustainable energy to customers and also to potentially provide greater savings to customers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Linda Hillman, followed by John Brison.
Good evening, Mayor Adam and members of the city council. I'm a resident of Camarillo, your neighbor just over the grade, and I'm speaking on behalf of Ventura County businesses and citizens for community choice, a group 90 strong and growing. My purpose tonight is to encourage Thousand Oaks to join a community choice energy regional feasibility study, should Santa Barbara County decide tomorrow to fund one. Tomorrow, Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors will be hearing that budget request and have asked to know whether the cities and other counties in the region are interested in participating, and if so, whether they would consider contributing to costs. Two community choice energy entities currently operating in California Marin Clean Energy and Sonoma Clean Power tell us they repaid such costs after they began operations. Thus far, the city of Santa Barbara has voted to contribute $50,000 to the feasibility study, and city of Carpinteria voted to send our letter of interest and to consider contributing funds. Community choice energy can result in lower electricity bills while increasing access to renewable energy, can stimulate a local economy and add jobs, and this is because such entities are able to fund local energy-generating projects. An example is Marin's San Rafael Airport Solar Project that provided both jobs and locally-generated solar power to the community. The way it works is that governing bodies of cities or counties vote to establish a community choice entity. Marin and Sonoma each chose to establish a joint powers authority. The joint powers authority purchases the power. The local utility continues to provide energy distribution, grid management, and billing services. Customers can opt out and remain served by the local utility, but they can also stay in the joint powers authority and have their local power purchased by the joint powers authority, with the local utility still distributing the power and managing the grid and providing billing services. Both Marin and Sonoma have reported being able to serve their customers with lower rates than the local utility while also offering greater access to renewable energy, and it has worked so well that other cities and counties have joined their joint powers authorities. Five have joined Marin, and eight have joined Sonoma. I hope that Santa Barbara County receives enough encouragement from cities and other counties in our region to move forward with the feasibility study, and I also hope that when your city council has a chance to consider community choice energy, you will want to participate in a regional feasibility study. We all stand to gain so much from community choice energy, and we'll be able to do so so much sooner if we can coordinate our efforts. And the materials I provided you have a heads-up on four new feasibility studies in the state that are progressing. Three in Northern California and then Los Angeles, that will be funding a feasibility study for the South Bay counties, or cities.
Thank you, Linda. John Brison, who is from the office of Assemblymember Jackie Irwin, followed by Helen Cox. Hello, John.
Hello. My name is John Brison, and I'm a longtime Thousand Oaks resident. I wanted to thank the council members, Mr. Mayor, and staff for this opportunity. As we all know, we're in a historic drought, and we've seen the governor take emergency actions earlier this year to address it, but not all solutions in this drought are going to come from Sacramento. A lot of them are going to be right here in our community. I'm here tonight to talk about defeat the drought. Saturday, June 27th, Assemblymember Jackie Irwin is co-sponsoring, along with the city of Thousand Oaks, a water conservation expo aimed at helping us all conserve. There is going to be activities for children with interactive and educational presentations. We're going to have a panel, question-and-answer panel with water experts. Here at the Civic Arts Plaza, out in the courtyard, we're going to have vendors tabling, more efficient fixtures, nurseries, landscapers. We're going to have workshops going on up in the conference rooms of the plaza. Those are going to be on things like biochar, which, of course, the city has done some terrific things with, gray water uses, how to get tax incentives, and not only what to do, but how to go about getting those tax incentives and breaks for barrels for your rainwater and laundry to lawn. We're very excited about this event. Wendy the Water Drop is going to be there. I buried the lead. We're going to have information and education, how to save water and save money. When it comes to water, we really are all in this together, and the city of Thousand Oaks has done some amazing things, and I'm very proud of my city. This is a chance to see what the city is doing and what we can all do individually to contribute to this and help secure our water security for the future. So Saturday, June 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Civic Arts Plaza. We hope to see you there, and we would very much like for you to come out and just to hear what's going on. There's a rising consciousness about the drought and how serious it is, and I think this is an opportunity for all of us to really get involved, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brison. Helen Cox, followed by Jamal Moore. Hello, Helen.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me speak this evening, Mayor Adam and city council. My name's Helen Cox. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm also a professor in sustainability at Cal State Northridge, and I'm here tonight to encourage the council to take part in the community choice energy feasibility study that a group of organizations in the county and various cities are trying to put together through a joint effort. So the idea of community choice energy is that basically communities get together and propose an alternative energy supply to that supplied by our local provider here, which is Southern California Edison. We would maintain the energy infrastructure that that company provides to us, but we could replace the energy supply with local renewable energy distributed over the county, so solar energy, wind energy, or other forms of energy that we feel are good alternatives. What this does is provide business opportunities locally for solar installers, for businesses who want to feed into that program. It allows anybody to generate power locally and feed into the grid, and that way, we can clean up our energy supply. Now, I was a part of the visioning process that the city put together. It was a wonderful effort, tremendous effort, that I really appreciate the city getting all of its community members involved in. One of the top priorities out of that that came out was the desire of the residents of this community to develop a climate action plan, or have the city look at climate action planning for the future. Doing a study such as this, such as looking at energy alternatives, would be a great step forward that the city council could take and would support that will of the people to start looking at alternatives for our energy supply. Besides the business opportunities that it presents to the local residents, it also presents alternatives for residents who can't install solar on their own houses, for example, if they're not single-family occupants and they live in multifamily dwellings, and also for businesses, as I mentioned. Our rates here from Southern California Edison, if you're in Tier 3 or 4, basically you're paying rates that are double what LADWP charges per kilowatt hour, once you get into the higher tiers, and certainly, we would be able to reduce those rates considerably for those people, and with clean renewable energy. So I'd just like to encourage the city council to consider this and become part of a larger community group to examine the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Jamal Moore, followed by Nick Kidway.
We shall, we shall overcome. Guess when? Today. Greetings to all. The penny is the head, not the tail. I am symbolic of the female Job and Moses in the Bible, my son being thy rod and thy staff. I am the mother caregiver doctor lawyer to my son, his aunt Sullivan. My adult son, Jamal, who has a rare neurological condition in which figuratively he should be in a wheelchair, diapers, and drooling, in which actress Julianne Moore is the national spokesperson of the condition, this rare condition called tuberous sclerosis. I am a service-connected Army veteran in which I served my country before my son was born. My son and I have appeared in Jet Magazine in March 7 of 2007, in which Louis Farrakhan appeared on the front cover, as well as our current President Obama, Michelle, Oprah, as well as many other celebrity figures, based on worldly definitions. Michael Jackson, who was called a freak, who belonged to the circus. My son is no one's pimp. He's no pimp, okay? We are T.O. residents, and we have experienced some serious subtle racism, harassment, and discrimination under the guise of the real and true criminals in disguise. Hello? I represent the people. St. Pasquale Catholic Church, Christine knows who we are. The sheriffs were called over there. Today, the sheriffs were called to the Thousand Oaks Mall. For biased reasons, you can talk to security over there. Okay, I've sent emails to many. Mike Hauser. Hello, Scott. Where are you? Andrew Fox, hi. City managers, the people. Here we are, okay? Sweater with the T.O. Alliance for the Arts cam. We've offered our services. My son has a rare gift here of blowing extraordinary bubbles, don't you, Jamal? And he wants to share his gift to the area here. I am symbolic of womb and not donkey. We don't stink. I'm nobody's gorilla, and we're nobody's aunt, okay? We set a pledge of allegiance to the flag. We put our hands on our hearts. Do we really mean it? This needs to stop immediately. Jill from the C.O. Westlake Chamber of Commerce Medicine person. The sheriffs were called because my son is swinging on a swing over here in the lakes. He enjoys swinging on a swing. This needs to stop. People can't see that if a man is on a swing, based on worldly definitions, there's something wrong. May God bless America.
Thank you very much.
This needs to stop.
Nick Kidway, followed by Ron Whitehurst.
I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway, still director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. And Mayor, if you want to empty this chamber quickly, just ask me to sing. I'm not kidding. I would like to welcome the Honorable Pastor Rob McCoy, who is in our presence, and thank him for the great campaign that he ran. What a breath of fresh air this wonderful man of God brings. I got this tie in 2006 in San Francisco liberal area for about $16. I thought it was overpriced that I would use it for two or three meetings, and I still use it because it stands for a council that does not listen to its residents, lets them go out when they have a problem, even if they might be extreme, does not get the residents involved, and has an un-American sign ordinance that you should be ashamed of, all of you. I had some tussle with Mr. Price two years ago when he ran, because the way to get signatures for your signage from businesses is just not enforceable, and there are no fines or teeth to the ordinance, and it's un-American. If I put two of Rob's signs in front of my home, I'm in violation of the ordinance. I mean, it's disgrace to that beautiful flag that we have. I mean, some immigrants were here already, kids over here, some scouts were here. I mean, this is the kind of democracy that we're trying to push. I mean, it's shameful. I'm glad that the city clerk spent some time and money promoting the election, but why not give this... not give the candidates 100 megabytes or gigabyte on the website? I'm not for charity, but the thing is, people want to know about the candidates. They don't want slick flyers that cost 15, $20,000. If TO TV can show that from, this is from TO TV, doesn't show well. I showed this before and there's no technology involved anymore in this council. I mean, Rob has promised, and I have full faith that he will do some things. I just took a picture of Rob, gone, Rob with Ms. De La Penia and Joel, and tweeted it and sent it out. I mean, the photographer from the city that is over here, why can't he do that? I mean, there are so many opportunities to use technology, to get people involved. And I make a promise that if Rob lets me down, I will retire, because I've given up. I mean, he's the last hope for Thousand Oaks, and I'm serious about that. And I hope everybody will cooperate with him and give him a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Ron Whitehurst, followed by Jan Dietrich. Hi, Ron.
Hello. My name's Ron Whitehurst. My wife and I run a small business in Ventura. And we have been trying to lighten our carbon footprint. We are about 95% off of fossil fuel for heating our facility and about 20% on electric from photovoltaic. But there's some barriers. We don't have the ability to completely cover our buildings, about, what was it, 10,000 square feet of buildings with solar panels and connect to the grid. We are restricted to a limit of just 80% of what we use. So I would like to propose that you consider the Community Choice Energy, which will have a local panel, a local group. Every city council will have a representative on the council. And so you have direct access to decisions. Just this morning, at the Ventura County Council, Linda Parks was talking about a workshop that they had on earthquake preparedness. We're living on the ring of fire, and there could be a major earthquake at any time. And so, to the extent that we have local supplies of electricity, then that will give us a number of benefits as far as resiliency. During the Enron crisis, when the rates for gas went really high, I saw the need as a businessperson to be able to put solar panels on my roof and to be able to supply a good portion of my electric needs and heating needs, so that I can count on that portion of our expenses being covered. So the Community Choice will give us a number of options, that it will give us a higher percentage of renewable energy in our, represented by our electricity. And it will give us lower prices. And it will give us, if you imagine this, a big pot of money that we have some access to, to work on projects that make sense in our community, to expand solar energy on the roofs, which decreases the heating load on the roof, protects the roof so that it'll last longer. Number of side benefits there versus electricity that's produced over there and shipped over here. And we lose about 40% in the transmission, so that we get basically a 40% bonus on the local electricity. And it gives us the ability to work on a number of projects that we decide are important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehurst. Jan Dietrich.
So I'm going to wrap up. Hi, Mayor Adam. And thank you for hearing a little bit from us about Community Choice Energy. I wanted to add to our presentation tonight that several of us have been studying this. I learned about it in January in a guest editorial in the Star. And I wondered, why aren't we doing this here? And I'm from West Ventura, so Supervisor Bennett is my supervisor. Eventually, we were able to meet and we removed some of the misconceptions that he had about how it's working now in Marin and Sonoma Counties. And we were encouraged to go forth. And I attended the May 18th forum that was held by the County of Los Angeles. That was a whole day of educating city leaders throughout Southern California. And I was very impressed with the CEOs from Sonoma Clean Power and Marin Clean Energy, their procurement officers, the financial experts that helped them put it together and get going, and the energy suppliers telling us that the energy market could not be better than now and to get ourselves in gear. I would say that, you know, I've actually watched the TED Talk where Chuck Rogers and Mark Watkins talked about the sewage treatment plant and the energy generation that you have here in the city. And you have a lot of great projects, sustainable projects, and this seems like a perfect fit for your city. And I think you could look to this leadership from the City of Lancaster. They set a number of years ago to be a net-zero energy city, and the city council did not wait to form an aggregation with any surrounding city. They just set up to procure their own energy. They promised every ratepayer 3% less on their bills and a continually high proportion of renewables with a goal of 100%. So I think that, you know, because the chief benefits are the cost savings in Sonoma County, $1 million a month net income, and local control over appropriate energy for our region and local energy security, that Ron was saying, every resident in the county ought to be in favor of this. Thank you a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Dietrich. Thank you, speakers. I have three written statement cards that we will enter into the record. And Mr. Mitnick, do you have some follow-up for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll follow up on two items. First, we appreciate the enthusiasm for the speakers that came down on Community Choice. Jay Spurgeon, our Public Works Director, will gladly follow up accordingly and see what we can do together. The city council and this city organization has embraced concepts like this for quite some time, so it fits in nicely with the city council's top priorities and goals and objectives for the upcoming year. We also heard about the Drought Expo that's coming up on, I'll do a little plug, on June 27th. It is a joint effort with our Assemblymember and the city of Thousand Oaks. So that's Saturday, June 27th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can go to the city's website and get more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Yes, Ms. De La Penia.
Mr. Mitnick, will you also be able to follow up with the lady and her son who spoke regarding allegations of racism?
Yes, we'll work with the police department accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let us move on to the consent calendar. Any items to be pulled, Ms. De La Penia?
Item E, please, 7E.
7E. All right, we're going to pull 7E, and I do have some speaker cards that we'll get to first. First up, we have Dr. John Sand from Cana Valley Unified School District. Hello, John.
Good evening. Longtime resident of Thousand Oaks and admirer of our city and staff. Mayor Adam, council members, city manager Mitnick, and city staff, community members, we at the Cana Valley Unified School District enjoy a long-lasting relationship in terms of student safety, community awareness, and in particular, tonight's item, crossing guards. We understand the process. We understand and appreciate the city's ability to have a less restrictive threshold for permitting and providing crossing guards than the state would. In addition to that, we very much appreciate the outreach and efforts by Jay Spurgeon and Kathy Lowry in really meeting the needs and discussing even potential crossing guard situations when parents and community members bring it to our attention. Earlier this year, we were notified of a traffic commission evaluation of four particular locations. One is in an unincorporated area. That matter has been resolved, and there are strategies in place. Three of the other locations had to do with the fact that the thresholds and the pedestrian and vehicle traffic did not meet those less restrictive requirements. At the Transportation Committee meeting, two of those locations were eliminated from consideration. And at the time, each of our schools that were subject, and in fact, for the purposes of tonight, Maple Elementary's principals contacted and asked to communicate through school site council, all call systems, and other ways to make sure that staff and parents and students know that this is an agendized item. At the time of the traffic commission, there were no responses, none whatsoever, as reported by the office manager and Mr., or I should say, Dr. Santos. Prior to this evening, I did actually speak with Mr. Santos. He had mentioned that a parent was generating a petition. And about two hours ago, I learned that there were 16 names on that petition. So we appreciate the concern. We appreciate the opportunity to get out in front of this, and we appreciate your sensitivity in listening to the needs of our parent community and our students and their safety. And I'll be here remaining for questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Dr. Sand.
Thank you.
Nick Kidway, followed by Joshua Salti.
Nick Kidway, Director Concerned Citizen of Thousand Oaks. I would like to speak on, it's not just E that we're talking, just consent calendar. Number D, website design, $108,000. I don't know how much we spend right now, but the city's website is not even responsive. I mean, you can get a $200 website and you own a tablet, you can play with it. And the same thing goes on iPhone. So, I mean, I hope that this time, we will spend our tax dollars wisely. I did not attend the traffic commission meeting, but I watched it on my laptop. The counts are warrants. The reason staff has them is at such low numbers. If staff can, TO TV can show my picture, that's a reason to not count the kid. Can you believe that? Cookie monster. I mean, that scares crossing guards. She was not counted. This one over here, you know, she's trying to scare the people. I mean, that's the problem with kids nowadays, so that's why the counts are so low. You can't count these two girls, because there are two of them. One of them is preschool, so we don't count preschool people, because they're not going to the, and then we won't count the other one, because you have, in fact, that's a Dr. On De La Penia product, the other girl. So maybe that's it even to not count. Just on the same consent calendar, there is $12,227 that the city is giving to make the boulevard like Wilshire Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. $12,227. And staff says, this is not about money. It is darn right about money. Like somebody said yesterday, do you care more about the matrix system or do you care about our children? I mean, even if you vote this change, and in 94, I was involved with crossing guards were being cut. This happens all the time. And then they become, you become heroes by instigating it again. For God's sake, do the right thing and do it without a lot of bullying from the citizens over here. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Joshua Salti, followed by Bridgette Rosson.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Hello, Josh.
Thank you for hearing me. My name's Joshua Salti. I live and work within city limits. I've been a resident of the area for about seven years. I'm a sales manager at Dole Packaged Foods in Thousand Oaks, and I'm also a member of the Thousand Oaks Business Roundtable. I have followed this issue for only a couple months now. I wanted to attend the May 20th Traffic and Transportation Meeting, but I couldn't make it. I did have my email forwarded through a friend. The next evening, I watched the meeting on TO TV on the website, and I agree 100% with the public's comments and how Commissioner Angie Simpson voted that evening. And that was a vote to keep all crossing guards at all locations. I'm not comfortable with the report and how it uses statistics to justify a cost-saving initiative with regard to our children's safety. This is absolutely not how we should be looking at this. Page 2, Table 1 of the report shows crossing guard standards at the city and state level. Table 2 shows that at three locations in question, the pedestrian volume is far underneath the city and state standards. Since the average annual cost per guard is $7,000, the cost per child to have a crossing guard is too high of a dollar amount to justify it. And so now, we're putting a dollar amount on our kids' safety. We're better than this. The city's better than this. As a taxpayer and voter, I firmly believe that if we have one child crossing the streets, we owe that child a crossing guard, and especially at the intersections where there's always been one. We still need the human interaction, eyes, ears, and wisdom from the older crossing guards for the kids, since they're still there crossing the street. It only takes one speeding, distracted, bad driver to have an awful community tragedy, and then what? We save a couple grand? Texting and driving is an epidemic, and it's getting worse. The other day, I was leaving Home Depot with my wife, and she points to the car next to us, and she goes, "This young man is FaceTiming his girlfriend while driving." So not only was he breaking the law that says you can't hold the phone up, he was looking at his girlfriend as he drove up Wendy. It's an epidemic, and it's awful. You guys have to have noticed yourself. I do not think that discontinuing the crossing guard services is in alignment with the city's goals or guiding principles. If we look at the city of TO, citywide goals for fiscal year 2014 to 2015, bullet point C says, "Maintain a strong commitment to public safety to ensure the city remains one of the safest cities in the United States with population over 1,000, 100,000." Bullet point I speaks to developing TO Boulevard and Newbury Road into a pedestrian-friendly downtown area. Well, eventually, we're going to want to roll that out to the rest of the city, so this would be in opposition to that. If we look at the top 10 guiding principles from the Visioning 2064 Program, which I really liked, by the way, I wanted to do it every week, but I was told no. The second bullet point is foster an environment that allows students to pursue academic excellence in a safe, healthy, and crime-free atmosphere. That's a second bullet point. The third is strive to maintain a strong quality of life, including public safety, education, cultural affairs, health care, open space, and recreation. Those are the top two themes. So the two themes here are strong quality of life and a strong commitment to public safety. That's who we are in the city of Thousand Oaks. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Salti. Bridgette Rosson, followed by Anthony Rosson.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and staff. I actually got, I have the petition with me that we started, and we just started it yesterday, and we actually have 106 signatures. And I'm going to fax over the others earlier today. My daughter and my husband helped us get signatures yesterday, and we met with the cars driving up and students, and a couple students even signed. They don't know how to even sign their signature, so they just put student next to it. As concerned parents of students at Maple Elementary, we were disappointed to find out that they were talking about getting rid of our crossing guard at Kimber and Baxter. I don't know if anybody's been in that area, but it's a very fast street. They have a signal now. It's not a regular signal, it's like push a button to cross, but even cars are not stopping then. They're stopping at the last moment. You know, kids are waiting for the crossing guard. They're learning the responsibility of crossing a street. My daughter's 10, and she still thinks that she could, you know, not get hit by a car, that it's not going to happen to her. And if she did, she would just jump over it. And there's, we're trying to teach our kids responsibility at that level. We did get this uncontrolled signal, and the crossing guard has still been very helpful making everybody stop. Even when my husband and I cross, she makes us wait for her and does the right thing every day. Maple Elementary is a smaller school in terms of number of students. I think we have about, the last I heard was about 312 students. Of that 100 are bused in, so we have about 212 with the capability of walking to school. And the data that they collected were saying, I know we need to meet the quota of 20 kids to cross, as well as 300 cars, which we have met the quota of 300 cars, almost double at times in that area. The 11 to 13 kids are in the morning and the afternoon crossing. I know it doesn't seem like a large number, but when you compare the average... I know it doesn't seem like a large number, but when you compare the average number of kids crossing with that small of a school, the percentage is very high. It's about, looking at my math here, it leaves about 212 kids that would walk to school, averaging about 12 kids, taking the average of the 11 and 13. It's about 6% crossing. This doesn't include parents or residents in the area that cross with, in the mornings and the afternoons. There's another school in the area with about 541 students. I don't know how many of those kids are bused, but taking that average of 12, that's only 2% of their students crossing. So, we have three times as many potential students, just because we have a smaller school, but we have a much bigger street to cross than all those other kids. Right now, the speed limit indicators, we've had those on a couple of occasions. I've rarely seen police out there signing tickets to people speeding. I've been given hand signals when I've turned one time in front of somebody, and they had plenty of room, but they were speeding, so they got close to my car and weren't happy. They had to slow down. I know the cost when I've researched it. There's about $6,000 to pay for the crossing guard, which I think is a small price to pay for our students' safety and lives. I keep thinking ahead, any tragedy that has occurred, sorry, and the response after a tragedy is what we could have done to stop it from happening. And I think we have the ability to do that with this.
Thank you, Ms. Rosson. Anthony Rosson, followed by Kyle McIntosh.
Good evening, and thank you for having me, and us that are in support of keeping the crossing guards. I just wanted to sum up, I'll be very brief. To me, this is, there really isn't a conversation that needs to be had here. Children's safety, crossing guards, it's very simple in my mind. So, not to beat a dead horse, but you know, it doesn't matter if it's one child or 15, 20, 25, if it's a high-volume street, or it's something that's tucked away in a neighborhood. Every child should have that crossing guard, be safe, and the parents shouldn't have to worry. A lot of times, parents are still walking their children to school at the elementary level, but there are some kids that are going solo. Just the other day, I saw three little girls walking down our street, going to school, and they were without parents. So, they need that safety, and I will say, especially for Maple Elementary and Baxter and Kimber. It is quite a, quite a street, and in the mornings, they do have that sunlight coming in from the sun coming up for the day. So, once again, I don't think that this is a real conversation. I think we should look at our children's safety, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Rosson. Kyle McIntosh.
Thanks for your time. It's great to see all these faces after reading about you guys in the Acorn all the time. I'm here for the crossing guard situation as well. My son is a second grader at Maple. We live in the neighborhood just across Kimber, so every morning, I cross over Kimber myself and drop my son off. So, I'm a driver, seeing the traffic conditions. In the afternoon, my son is one of the 13 or 11 kids, I forget which it is, in the afternoon versus the morning, but he's one of the kids who's crossing in the afternoon. He's seven years old. I think if there's, if there's one thing to take away, and I think a few other people have mentioned it, that the traffic conditions were not adequately described. I'm not even sure how well they were described at all in the, in the report. The speed limit on that road is 40, and there is a sign that says 25 when children are present. Rarely do you see cars going 25 in that area in the mornings. It's much more often that you'd see a car going over 40 than you would see a car going 25. Just last Friday morning, a BMW, obviously, using Kimber as a through fare in the morning to get to the 101, cut over to Wendy and then go down Borchard. Was late or distracted or something, angry, driving very, very fast. And you see that all the time. That's not an exception. The other thing is that right around drop-off time, there are lots of parents who are dropping their kids off, and for those of you who know the area, the Maple Turnin is right there next to the crosswalk. And so, sometimes you even have cars backed up onto the crosswalk. Bottom line, it's just not a safe traffic area where I would want my son crossing on his own and trusting drivers to stop, even in the, you know, even with the neon signs and that sort of thing. Just wouldn't trust it. I talked to the crossing guard on May 29th. I picked my son up early. What she said to me, she said a couple of things to me. She said, "Cars oftentimes don't stop for her, so why are they going to stop for the kids?" And that was one of the things she said. And when I asked her, "Why do you think it is they don't stop?", she says that a lot of times, she thinks it's back to, I forget which gentleman was saying it, but it's, it goes back to the distracted driving, that oftentimes, they aren't even looking up, that they don't see her until they're past her or, you know, parallel with her. So, that's a further thing that I wanted to bring to your attention. I guess one final thing, you know, we're talking about, I think it's $7,200 over the course of 180 days. We're talking about $40 a day here. $40 a day to keep these 20 to 30 kids safe. I think, as a taxpayer in this city, as a resident for 11 years, as a finance director at Amgen, a company that has a lot of employees in Thousand Oaks, I feel like that is a pretty good use of our taxpayer money, $40 a day to protect these kids from a fairly chaotic traffic situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. All right, that concludes our speakers, and we've pulled 7E. Can you get a motion on the balance of the consent calendar? Mr. Fox?
Sure, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Ms. Bill De La Peña, 7E.
Thank you. The reason I pulled the item is, obviously, it is controversial, and many parents are unhappy. I wanted to, when I read the report, I thought, I saw some discrepancies. We have a school such as Walnut, which seems to have, seems to meet the threshold, yet it's not being financed because it is an unincorporated area, even though children from the city go to Walnut. So, that was one thing. And then the others, I couldn't quite understand why some crossing guards would be kept and others not, when none of them really meets a threshold. So, and then, of course, the issue of money was brought up. $180,000 it costs to have crossing guards at our public schools during the year. And that is not small change. That is a lot of money. Why, can you explain to me what decision was made on Walnut and why?
The School Site Safety Committee met out at that school. That included the principal, representatives from the county, police department and traffic commissioners as well. And one of the discussion items at that meeting was that the county is actually going to be implementing some additional mitigation measures at that crossing to include some additional striping. They discussed bulbouts, some different things. And so, what the School Site Safety Committee decided to do was to wait, because, because these numbers didn't meet all the pedestrian things, to wait until those mitigation measures were implemented, and then watch the intersection, watch the crossing and see how it responded. So, I expect this to come back in the future.
Okay. And those mitigation measures could not be implemented at the other schools?
Well, that was specifically for that site on that street. They'd actually done a study for that street, and they had added additional signage, but had not completed the other mitigation measures, so.
I'm just wondering whether the same theory and plan could be applied to other schools?
Yes. And in fact, at this intersection at Kimber Baxter, over the last couple of years, we've installed the flashing crosswalk lights at that location, which is an example of a mitigation applied at an intersection.
And how successful has it been, if at all?
Well, we hope, we hope that when people push the button, they become a little more aware that somebody is crossing. We have measured speed, and the speed through that area during non-school hours is roughly the same as it was before. Again, other than information from the crossing guard, and you know, we haven't observed a real big change. But, but those lights, they have advanced warning lights. I mean, they, they've got to be effective to some respect. I assume the crossing guard is using them as well.
And this proposal is for one year?
Yes, that is correct.
Do we know how other cities and school districts in Ventura County deal with funding crossing guards? Is there a 50-50 split between districts and cities? Does, do school districts finance 100% of crossing guards? What do we know?
We have asked our other sister cities in the county, and it is a real mix. Some of the cities, example, Porway Nimi, shares in that cost with the school district. Some of the other cities actually pay the whole amount, but the school district provides the program. And others are similar to Thousand Oaks, where the police department, well, in this case, it's a city, but in other jurisdictions, the police department does it. But it's a real mixed bag throughout the county.
Have we ever seriously thought at looking how to fund it differently?
We have, we have had discussions, and, and we hope to have more discussions in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you. I certainly agree with the speakers who were commenting on the safety of children. That, that obviously is paramount. But at the same time, every, every dollar counts when you're running a city government. I had some questions of staff, and I know that when we first initiated bulbouts at certain locations, there was a tremendous pushback from some of the residents. Was that one of the intersections where it was even contemplated?
No, it was not. And the primary reason is, the width of the roadway is, is actually not as wide as some of our other locations.
It's not?
Well, it's, it's not as wide. It's one lane in east direction. Some of the locations where we installed bulbouts actually were, were a little wider with a center median or a wider turn lane and some other, other attributes.
So, would this not fit the criteria for bulbouts, then?
No, it, it could. It could. We, you know, when we did that bulbout project, there was, there was quite a bit of community discussion on, on whether or not they were necessary and effective. So, this particular intersection just did not happen to include those, that design feature.
Okay. Yeah, this is, discussion is really not about the money as much as it is about the safety. And I, I think that as policymakers, we have to make decisions, and we have to have guidelines and standards, because there's always the unintended consequence of allowing something to remain that doesn't meet the, the criteria, that you will then have other schools wanting to be treated similarly. So, $180,000 budget, while it may, may appear to be a small number, as some of you in the audience, can certainly grow if we allow the rules to be bent all the time. So, we're, you know, we're trying to work on solutions all the time, and I think Council Malumbir, Bill De La Peña, touched on one that, as I read the report, I thought about, and that is, traditionally, the city has borne the cost of these crossing guards, and with declining revenues for cities, and, you know, it's not necessarily something that the city, as we've heard from Mr. Finley here, is responsible to provide, and that maybe there's some way we can, and I guess this would be kind of for staff, but perhaps engage the school district in some discussions about sharing, cautionings for this. And maybe it's time to take a look at our, our thresholds again, although I don't, I don't think they would necessarily change. One of the other things that I looked at is that there's a chart on Table 3 where it shows the declining pedestrian counts at each one of the schools. And a lot of that is indicative of declining school enrollments at CVUSD. So, there's just a lot of things that need to be taken into consideration when we're, when we're dealing with subjects like this. So, while I, I see the signatures that you've gathered, you've done a great job of going out there and engaging in the process, and, and I would not be in favor at this point of discontinuing service at any of these. I know that staff's recommendation to the traffic commission was that they, all three of these locations be eliminated, but that's because staff has to work with the guidelines that, that we've given them. And staff did their job in so doing and making that recommendation. We have a little more flexibility, as does the Traffic and Transportation Commission, that they can make recommendations that might be a little bit outside of the lines, but we certainly have the authority to do that. And I would be in favor of approving this at this point, but I think we need to look at alternatives going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Fox?
The, while the report lays out the counts, it is contradictory in its conclusions based on what the traffic commission did. That being said, council's aware, I always caution the council to be very thoughtful about going against a commission report that comes to the city council. All of us are well aware, in particular, the traffic commission and the planning commission, they do great work when it comes to a lot of detailed information. And so, you know, I'm always hesitant to, to change or alter a report that comes from one of our commissions. That being said, there are schools that are being recommended that don't meet the criteria either. And so, as Mr. Price points out, and Ms. Bill De La Peña also, that's why there's human beings up here and not just somebody reading a, you know, a chart. One thing I can share with everybody, and I know Mr. Price recognizes this, the, the incidence of a pedestrian getting hit by a car, that does happen, but if there's an adult with a sign, the likelihood is a lot less. There's just no doubt about it. It does provide a margin of safety that, you know, truly is measurable. That being said, I do agree that, I think the council needs to decide, are we going to be in the crossing guard business or not? We have to, I think we need to look at this in its entirety. I, I would not support eliminating a crossing guard on a piecemeal basis, because I can just guarantee, if fate being what it is, if you even have a minor accident at the intersection where the crossing guard used to be, there'll be a lot of people here, and we aren't going to have a good reason for them. No stat, no chart, no nothing is gonna, is gonna matter in that circumstance. So, I think the broader question is, should we be in the crossing guard business? And if we are not, then who should be? And I think the discussion, we have a new school superintendent coming in. I think it's a good opportunity for Mr. Mitnick to sit down with the new superintendent and engage in a thoughtful discussion about a process of possibly changing who is responsible for this. Claudia points out, Walnut isn't in the city. If that's going to be a criteria, that's fine, but we need to treat everybody basically the same if we're going to get out of the business, because kids are kids. And again, nobody really cares when you have a, you have a, a traffic accident or pedestrian, auto pedestrian accident. So, I think we need to approve, keep the program the way it is, and direct the city manager to meet with the superintendent of schools and the county, if appropriate, and look at transitioning this, this program out of the city, if in fact, that's what is the norm. You know, I wasn't particularly happy with the response we got. We got a mixed bag, but I really don't know what that meant. I didn't hear, and maybe just for brevity's sake, what I think the council need to know is, is in other cities, in the county and also outside the county, are there, for example, school districts that fund these programs in and of themselves? I think that's a piece of information we need to hear. Number two is their partnership, where there's a 50-50 split. And then, number three, are there situations where the jurisdiction is outside the city boundaries, but the families are inside the city boundaries and, you know, how they, how they were. I think council needs a little more information on what the industry standard is, if you will, and then we're going to be in a better position, certainly, to direct the city manager and give him some direction on moving forward with the school district. But I don't think we should do this on a piecemeal basis. I would conclude with, Banyan Elementary is, is, that's being recommended to continue, correct?
Yes.
And the PM pedestrian is three or four kids. So, three or four kids. At some point in time, you do have to say, it's not a money issue, it's, there's not a lot of folks there. Somebody's, maybe we need a meeting with the principal, or somebody needs to look at, you know, a different program there, because, you know, $7,000 is not a lot of money. $180,000 buys a police officer, a 24-hour police officer. So, this is not a small amount of money, and I just think we need to be thoughtful about as we move through this. But I don't think it's a good idea to be picking and choosing schools. We need to look at it. It's an... We need to look at it in its entirety. So I'm gonna, do we have, I'll move that we actually continue our program in its current status, funding all these schools, all five, and direct the city manager to meet with the school district in the county and come up with a work plan that would, if appropriate, transition us out of the crossing guard business. If on the other hand, most cities do fund it, then I think we need to look at that. That's just maybe the cost of doing business.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Bill de La Peña.
That is precisely what I had in mind is to, looking at the statistics here, it is so, there is quite an inequity where a crossing guard is recommended for a school with the fewest number of pedestrians and yet at another school which has triple the numbers, it is suggested to actually eliminate it. So this report made absolutely no sense. And while we are at it, I would definitely support continuing this program as is with a crossing guard at all the schools for one year as is proposed and in the meantime, ask Mr. Mitnick to talk to school district officials to see if we can come to some sort of common ground regarding the funding for crossing guards because as has already been mentioned, it is time to reevaluate this agreement that we have with the school district. So I would be very much in favor of the motion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bill de La Peña. Mr. Price, do you have anything else? All right. Thank you. Yeah, children's safety is always an emotional issue, understandably so. It is an expensive program, $180,000 a year. I would be in favor of not changing anything at this point. I think it's a good idea to talk with the school district. We do have a new superintendent about how we fund this thing going forward. Obviously, the more funding we have, the better coverage we can get, but it's time to review this whole program. There are some real close calls in here as far as assigning a guard or not. Walnut Elementary is very close to the standard, but be that as it may, I would be in favor of the motion. Let's open up a dialogue with the superintendent of schools and keep everything as is for now. Did I get that right, Ms. Fox? All right. Motion on the floor. Vote please.
Motion carries for zero.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to go on to public hearings. We have two this evening. The first is on our operating budget and our capital improvement program. If you would open that for us, Ms. Lawrence.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, the proposed fiscal year 2015-16 and fiscal year 2016-17 operating budget and capital improvement program budget. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two people have presented speaker cards in pursuit to council standards. The speakers are allowed five minutes each. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. John Adams.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, City Council. So this evening, we are actually having a public hearing on our operating and CIP budgets, the proposed budgets for fiscal year 2015-16 and 2016-17. I'm going to briefly go through the background on the budget, provide you a brief overview of the proposed budget, both operating and CIP, and then talk a little about going forward specifically related to the financial strategic plan. And then at the end, we have recommendations and then staff's available for any questions. So just quickly, the budget process actually started in November of 2014. I highlight some key dates that occurred with the city council. Really, the top one was the council goal setting. This is where council sets their top 10 priorities for the next fiscal year. As you are all aware, we also had a CIP study session in April and we also had the operating budget study session just two weeks ago, May 26. So as always, this operating budget does comply with council policy, or council's financial and budget policies, and it allocates resources to accomplish the council's top priorities for the next fiscal year. So briefly, here's the overview of the citywide budget for fiscal year 2015-16. The overall budget is $174 million. Highlighting in the blue part of the pie graph is the general fund at almost 44%. That's where council has the most discretion in its spending. The other two major funds are water and wastewater. Between the general fund, library fund, and the enterprise funds, you're talking about 90% of the city's budget. So the next fiscal year, which actually is an increase, 2016-17, the overall budget's $190 million. Again, the general fund is the largest portion at 40%. And again, water, wastewater are two other significant funds. So we talked, the general fund is 40, over 40% of the city's budget. I want to show you the revenues within the general fund. As you know, the single largest revenue source for the city is sales tax. That represents almost 38% of the general fund revenues for next year. General fund revenues are anticipated or projected to be $75.8 million. The other two revenues, property tax and VLF, between the three of those, it's two-thirds of the general fund revenue. So we, you know, again, are always highly dependent on sales tax, but the other two major revenue sources are also very important. So in the second year, there's actually a slight increase in revenues at $77.5 million. Again, sales tax is 38%, almost 40%. And again, VLF, property tax represent about 65% of the total revenues in the general fund in the second year. So since sales tax is our top revenue, just want to show you some history. This goes back 10 years and you can see it peaking out at 2007 before the Great Recession. Great, yeah, recession? Yes, okay. It did bottom out at $21.5 million. We do anticipate in the second year of the proposed budget that sales tax will exceed the high point from 2007. So 10 years later, sales tax is returning to its top, at its peak in 2007. Property tax, not the same as far as the decline. We did see assessed values stay relatively steady over the last five years. We do anticipate a 2% growth over the next, for 2% growth in each year over the next three years. So here are the general fund operating appropriations between salary and benefits for employees and police, which are both personnel costs. We're talking almost 80% of the budget is in personnel costs. We are in public service and that's how we provide services, through people. Capital budget in the first year is $5 million. In the second year, general fund appropriations are $75.4 million, which is a decline. That decline is based on capital actually going from $5 million down to $2.7 million. Again, police and salary and benefits represent almost 80% of the general fund expenditures. So just a couple of points. The general fund budget is structurally balanced. Operating revenues do exceed operating expenditures. There are slight increases in all major revenues for the general fund. And since the study session was only two weeks ago, no significant changes have been made to the operating budget from that meeting two weeks ago. Certainly, the numbers aren't exactly the same, but that is staff refining numbers and projections over the last two weeks. As far as other funds, again, from an operation side, nothing was changed significantly in the operating budgets for any other fund. So briefly, on the capital improvement budget, this just shows you the summary for fiscal year 2015 through 2017. The total budget for CIP is $59.8 million. We show it based on category. The largest single category is water at 19.6 plus the carryover of 2.3. And then transportation, streets, wastewater are the next three significant expenditures. So the CIP budget for, just to show you in a pie graph, again, 59.8, water, 33% of the capital expenditures over the next two years will be in the water fund. Wastewater, transportation, and streets are the next three. This just shows you the top 10 projects by budget. Number one is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Undergrounding, which is anticipated to go out to bid later this fall and occur next year at $13.5 million. Two point, or $10.2 million or $10.5 million is from redevelopment, prior redevelopment funds. Again, these top 10 projects represent between the carryovers and the new appropriations, a little close to $51 million. Just some highlights, there were, since the budget study session for CIP occurred in April, there were two projects that were added to the CIP budget, one in transportation. The other, based on the discussion at the study session and how we set priorities 1 through 3, what staff is recommending tonight is that Priority 1 be amended to say, or if it is a council top priority, to add it as Priority 1. Based on the budget, there were two projects that were moved from Priority 2 to Priority 1, if that is at council's, at the end, if that's at council's direction. A couple of other points I want to make. One, our budget transparency tool, OpenGov. This is an interactive web-based product that is on our front page of our website. And then two, part of our people strategy is a new platform they're going to be rolling out over the next year related to performance measures. And staff is really excited about that. That's with ICMA Insights. Briefly, here's a snapshot of our budget transparency tool. What's really neat about this is that once we publish both the operating and CIP books, we're talking about 800 pages of information, financial information. What's nice about the budget transparency tool that's on the website, if you want to go and see how much we spend on police, you can go out there, simply type in public safety. You can see what we have spent over the last 10 years. And even based on tonight's proposed budget, you can even see what we're proposing for the next two years. Very interactive. You want to know our sales tax history, I showed you the chart earlier. You can actually see revenues online, whether it's sales tax, property tax, water revenue. It's really a great way to see the city's budget in a very interactive way. And then just quickly, I mentioned that ICMA Insights is our new performance measurement tool that we're rolling out in this next year. Sort of excited about that. We're going to change the way we do performance measurement. And here's just a quick snapshot of what the new program will look like. So there has been some discussion based on the financial strategic plan. There are some areas that we will see some long-term financial challenges. We've had discussions both at the goal setting and at a couple of the study sessions related to about coming back to council and giving you options and discussing how we address some of these long-term challenges. So staff anticipates coming back to council within 120 days, hopefully towards the end of September or early October, to talk in depth of those challenges that we've identified in the past meetings. And then so for tonight, we have four recommendations. One is to adopt the resolution, adopting the proposed budgets for both CIP and operating, to update and adopt our financial policies. Also, the discussion related to the CIP priorities and amending Priority 1 to include anything that the city council considers a top priority as well as health and safety. And then number four is authorize the city manager to make carryovers related to the capital budget. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Questions? I have one. Priority 1?
Priority 1.
Would you attach a timeframe to a Priority 1 project?
In the capital budget, capital projects normally go over one fiscal year. So for instance, I'll use Teo Boulevard Undergrounding as the example, it would be a Priority 1 as long as it's in the capital budget. So I would say that would go beyond one year. So it's anticipated to start in, let's say, spring of 2016 and probably won't get done until sometime in 2017. So it would be during that period of time. That was a Priority 1 within the capital budget.
All right. So Priority 1, one to two years, would you say, in general?
I would say it would always be in excess of a year if it was related to capital.
Okay.
So yeah, but two years would be reasonable.
How about Priority 2?
Well, Priority 2 would, that priority would always be there as long as it was a project in the capital budget. So same thing. I don't think we would change it unless a Priority 2 became a council top priority. So there could be a project that was in the budget, and I can maybe use AutoMall as an example. The AutoMall project has been in the budget for several years, going back, let's say, 2009, I think. That was a Priority 2. It's on the council's top priority and so based on the change, it would go into Priority 1 for this next two-year period.
So Priority 2 could be two years or beyond?
Correct.
All right. Yeah, I like the way you added that little addendum to Priority 1, that if it's a council priority, it should in fact be a Priority 1. That makes total sense to me. I do, if you recall in the last hearing, I brought this up, and I'm going to bring it up again because I think our priorities are too low on two items in here. On page 14, the Canayo School Hill Chris Drive to Teo Boulevard sidewalk. And on page 26, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Streetscape improvements. You've given them both Priority 3s. And loosely, you could interpret that they do line up with a council priority, and that is that we put together an ad hoc committee to address the revitalization of the Boulevard. And both of these projects would have something to do with that. And I personally think they should be at least a Priority 2. Why do you have them at 3?
I'm gonna, when we talk about capital, the capital budget, there's really two departments that work on it. One is Public Works under the leadership of Mr. Spurgeon and our city engineer, Cliff Finley, who would have assigned those priorities for projects that are managed by the finance department, they would have assigned to those priorities. I'm going to let Mr. Finley.
Well, if we're attaching timeframes to this, a Priority 3 could be four or five years into the future and...
Right. So let me clarify. If a project is actually, has a page and is being funded over the next two years, even if it's a Priority 3, it's receiving the funding. I don't, from a staff allocation aspect of how soon it gets done, of course, it might not get the same attention as a Priority 1, but the goal would be to get during, completed during the two-year period.
Well, I would like these to get some attention. And I appreciate if we could move those to Priority 2.
If I could interject, we will move those two to Priority 2. These are, this is the city council budget, and if you'd like to change those, not a problem, consider it done.
If you want, yeah. Or 1.
That seems all right with my colleagues. I mean, when we talk about Priority 2, we're talking about necessary but not essential, could be consequences if deferred. Well, we have deferred the revitalization of the Boulevard now for quite some time, and these two projects are intrinsic to that revitalization, particularly the one on page 26, which deals with the Streetscape improvements. So let's move those to 2.
Yes, we will.
And if, did you have a comment?
I was ready to move them to number 1.
Did you? Yes, go ahead.
I just happen to disagree.
All right.
I mean, we can't just start willy-nilly reassigning everything because we have priorities in the top 10 council goals. I liked what you had before. I don't see why we need to switch anything. I mean, also included as top priorities is our environmental program, the forestry master plan, the climate action plan. All of those items, we talked at the last council meeting, need to be included and costs need to be included in this current budget. And I had suggested a tree inventory that we need to make in order to comply with the climate action plan and so forth and so forth. So can we move that up to Priority 1? Then they'll be happy.
Well, let me, just as far as, when council sets top priorities, it's part of your goal setting, resources are allocated in the budget to accomplish those in the fiscal year in which you're saying it. So I would, getting back to Mayor Adams, Mayor Adam comments, I would say that if it's a council priority, whether if, as long as it's a council priority, it can go to number 1 because it is a council priority. The two that he mentioned, if we attach them to the council priorities, I think they should be a Priority 1. The comments that you have on the other council priorities that aren't capital, that we don't necessarily call out, I think those are also top priorities and we allocate resources in the budget to accomplish those. So everything that the council identifies as a top priority, the top 10 at the goal setting, there are resources either in the capital budget or in the operating budget to accomplish those for the fiscal year.
Exactly my point. So things will get done regardless really of what number there is. It just may take a little bit longer, so.
That's how you... That's how you...
That is why I'm saying, we don't really need to rearrange everything, because it's already, it will be handled.
Well, then, without argument, we don't need a priority system. Why rank them at all? I mean, you yourself said that some receive more attention than others. If you look on our top 10 priorities, number two says, establish an ad hoc committee that will review and prepare an implementation strategy for the specific plan. Now, these two items are intrinsic to that strategy. So, I'm not asking for them to go to number one, but I think number three would be not adherent to what we're trying to do here. So, it may be a small point, but I do believe these need to be number two, at least. Mr. Price, anything? Mr. Fox?
Well, I, yeah, I think what I'm hearing is that it really doesn't much matter what they say. These were prioritized and put into the capital improvement program as a priority three, but they were upgraded to priority one, based on the council's direction. So, I think we've already done what you are seeking to achieve...
Well, no, no.
...without having to change the number here.
What was upgraded was the undergrounding of the utilities and the auto mall. That was upgraded.
No, but we also made a, one of our priorities was getting moving and establishing a Boulevard specific plan ad hoc committee that you and council member Fox are part of.
Yes, I understand.
So, that, and everything that's part of that is, has been moved up to a priority one, and will be treated as such, regardless of what it may show in any other document.
Well, if you look on page 25, you'll see that the streetscape improvements, which were called for in the specific plan, and in my opinion are intrinsic to some sort of implementation of that plan, are listed as priority three.
Right. And I don't think anybody's disagreeing with you. They are listed as number three, but I think the staff is well aware that that is a top priority at this point for this council, and will treat it as such.
Then we wouldn't have any objection to putting it to number two, then would we?
If it would please you, I'd be happy to do it.
There's another item on here as well. I mean, some of this is subjective. The lights have been out of our Civic Arts Plaza sign now for months, and it's here as a priority two. Now, it's not on our priorities, but it is the face of the city, and you could make a case that we ought to fix those lights, and it should be a priority one.
I would agree.
You would agree.
Not related to the project, but it should be a priority to have them fixed. I will tell you...
And I'm not going to make a case about that, but I just happened to bring it up, which I've done numerous times in the past. At any rate, if it's all right with the rest of the council, I would like those two items moved to priority two.
Do we need to vote on that? If we do, if you're the maker of the motion, I'll ask for...
I don't know if it requires a vote or not.
Staff will make a...
Because we're going to vote on the whole thing. All right, we good with that? Okay.
I did have a couple of other questions about other items in the staff report, and they're very brief. On page 15 of the agenda packet, there, about midway on the page, where it says, "In addition, staff contacted Bureau of Reclamation, U.S. Department of Interior for funding as part of the Water Smart Funding, and the proposal was not accepted." And I'm wondering, what was the reason that that proposal was not accepted? Anyone? Get in there too late?
I'm going to turn it over to the city engineer. Based on the comments received by, or the discussion at the study session, staff followed up. I think that was assigned to Public Works to follow up on those, and that, so that information was provided by John Smalls, who's the superintendent out at the MSE.
Yeah, thank you. Those grant fund applications and grant funds are very specific, and the particular project that we had put it forth was a little bit of a stretch for getting that grant, and it clearly was not one of the selected criteria. It wasn't quite spot-on. We often apply for grants along the edges, hoping that we can make them fit, and sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, I assumed that it was something like that. The other question I have is probably a Public Works question, too, and that had to do with one of the two projects that were added, specifically the stormwater, in stormwater, the south branch of Arroyo Cano improvements, and the $300,000 that's being added to the budget for that. And it's my understanding that that is in, that that has everything to do with the efforts that a number of us have been working on for the past three years, I think, in meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, and trying to get some relief there for what would be an overburdened flood control channel there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you tell us a little bit about what that money's for?
Yeah, so, the Corps has done a preliminary investigation and has made a finding that the cost-benefit analysis is positive, and that they should pursue a preliminary design of improving that channel to take additional residents, both in the city and in the county, out of the floodplain. We budgeted money, kind of looking forward. We don't know exactly what the costs are going to be. We anticipate a cost-sharing with the county. This is a joint application with the county to the Army Corps. So, it's exciting news, and the Corps at this point in time is taking the lead, but we are actively assisting as we can.
Yes, indeed, it is exciting news. For the folks in the audience, and those of you listening, myself and council members Bill de la Peña and Mayor Adam have been to Washington, D.C., several years running now, and meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers in hopes that we can get them to expand the capacity in that south branch of the Arroyo, because it is, if we were to have a 100-year flood event, there are, I think the number is somewhere in the area of 330 homes that would be underwater. And as a result of that, they are, right now, paying for flood insurance. And we would, by getting the Army Corps involved and providing the capacity to move water through there, that would effectively move them out of the floodplain and reduce that burden to them. And it's a considerable burden, you know, $1,200 a year, or more, for that flood insurance. So, this is indeed good news, and I was glad to see that that kind of came in the last week, so it wasn't something that was on my radar. Thank you.
Yeah, that is good to hear. We had a number of trips to Washington. It's nice to see that we finally getting some results. All right, any other further questions? I have a couple of speaker cards. First up, Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Chase Rashid. Mr. Kidway is no longer here. Mr. Rashid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chase Rashid, City of Thousand Oaks. My comments are more in general on budget matters. As we learned at the city's goal-setting session, revenue is going, spending is going to exceed revenue. In fact, it practically already has, and that gap is going to increase over the next few fiscal years. We have to come up with a solution to this problem. Now, if we don't come up with a solution to this problem, we're going to have to do what is an effect sequestration, which is general cuts. Now, what we heard tonight about crossing guards being cuts, those are the type of general cuts that we are going to see, as the staff is going to struggle to find cuts that are, the sort of cuts we need to balance the budget. Legally, we have to balance the budget. We don't want to have to sacrifice public safety in order to balance the budget. Now, as the chart showed, salary is at the top of spending. It always is at the top of spending. Second is the police contract. Much of that comes from the pension of the police officers. The pension of the police officers is, a lot of that is inflated by the unions. And as pro-union as I am, I do think we have to look at getting pensions under control. We have to work with the county in order to do that. That's a difficult thing to do, as unions do have some control over the political system, but you got to stand up to them. Another thing I see here in department reports, which I think is a step in the right direction, is a move towards actually making the East County Transit Alliance work. It's going to be for a dollar ride. That's a step in the right direction, and if we can get that going with our bus system, we can actually, we might be able to actually increase revenue from that source. We'll have, we'll reunite with the other cities in East County to pay for improved transit, and also, at the same time, possibly be able to increase our revenue there. If we have better revenue from the transit department, if we have better service, we can get better revenue from the transit department. Right now, it takes about two hours to get from one side of town over to CLU, which is really unacceptable. I see a lot of people actually just skip using the bus system, because it just doesn't work very effectively. Even the Ventura County Transit Authority, they really didn't, they really would probably rather pull out of the system, and, in East County, and actually have the cities here handle it. So, I say we got to give them what they want, and if we can do that, we can secure more federal and state funding to boost our transit system. And in conclusion, I just have to say is, it's not easy to be fiscally disciplined, and I understand the challenge that the staff has to go through to balance the budget, and I commend them for that. But if we do not have the revenue to match spending, that's a real problem. The state has to make the cuts, and the state has done a great job at making cuts, which has hurt us at the city level. But we have to make those cuts. We don't have a choice but to do it, and I hope that council can rise to that challenge in future years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rashid. All right. Staff, follow-up to that?
No comments from staff.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? All right, I'm going to close the hearing and look for a motion to approve the operating budget in the capital improvement program fund. Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you again to the staff and all the staff, city employees, who worked diligently and over many, many months to put this together and make all the pieces fit together. You've done a great job, and with that, I would move staff recommendations, one through four.
All right, thank you. Mr. Price, we got a motion on the floor. If you vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, that is approved. Now, we will move on to our second public hearing, collection of wastewater service charges. If you'd open that for us, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, Agenda Item 8B, annual collection of wastewater service charges for the property tax roll. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council, and we have no speaker cards.
Good evening, Mayor Adam, council members. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure payment of delinquent wastewater service charges on active accounts by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's property tax bill. During the year, wastewater account holders are notified about their delinquent balances via billing reminder notices. Annually, letters are sent at the beginning of April notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcels for amounts that are 120 days past due in April of each year, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the past due amounts to the property tax rolls. To put this into context, when finance started the process at the beginning of April this year, we identified 676 wastewater accounts with delinquent balances totaling $133,000. During the subsequent weeks, some customers responded to the notices and paid. When leans were placed in mid-April, 381 leans were placed totaling just over $88,000. Customers continued to pay, bringing the amount subject to attachment today to 233 accounts totaling about $59,000. This is a very small amount, a small number of accounts to be attached compared to the 38,000 total connections. It's about a half of 1%. Today, the delinquent amount is a little less than $60,000, but we anticipate that by the time the final report is due to the county tax collector's office, the amount that will be attached to the property tax rolls will be closer to $50,000. Staff recommends that the council adopt resolution and approve the list of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the county tax collector for inclusion on the property tax rolls. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions? We good? All right, I have no speaker cards, and so, in that case, I'm going to close the hearing, short hearing. And would you like to make a motion, Ms. Bill de la Peña?
Since you asked so nicely, I will move Item 8B, recommendations one, two, one and two.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. All right, we're going to switch things up a little bit in deference to time and students that may have class tomorrow. So, we're going to hear from our youth commission, and we have Courtney Broussot here, the youth commission chair. Good evening, Courtney. He's going to give us the report.
Hello, Mayor Adam. Thank you so much, Mayor Adam, council members, city manager, and staff. Mayor Adam, to your point, I only have graduation practice tomorrow. I have no more classes, so that's nice.
Oh, okay.
But thank you very much for your consideration. Again, my name is Courtney Broussot, and I've had the pleasure of serving as the chair of the Thousand Oaks Youth Commission for this year, and so, I'd like to give you a little bit of a summary of some of our accomplishments that we were able to achieve. I have been really proud of what the youth commission has been able to achieve this year. I think that it's been a record year. We've been able to hold great events that we've been doing for years, as well as expand our programs and create new opportunities for our city's youth. And so, I'm really proud of all the work, the hard work that went into all of these amazing programs and events. And the first one that I'd like to talk about is the therapeutic dance. This year was our 25th Annual Therapeutic Dance, and we had the opportunity to, again, provide a problem-like experience for students with special needs who otherwise wouldn't have that opportunity. Our theme this year was the happiest dance on earth, and we celebrated with lots of Disney decorations, as well as delicious cake pops in the form of Mickey and Minnie Mouse. And we had Mickey and Minnie make a special appearance as well, to take a picture with some of the guests and entertain our over 130 attendees. And thanks to our 45 volunteers, as well as the Newbury Park High School Choir and the Newbury Park High School FHA Hero Club, we were able to put on a great event. And we'd also like to say thank you to our photo booth, because it was the first year that we brought in a photo booth that did a great job accommodating our guests and making sure that they had a great time. And we've even been helping out the COPD therapeutic unit, as they prepare to host a dance with a similar theme coming up in July for the International Special Olympics that we'll be hosting. Our next event was the Youth Recognition Awards, another one of our favorites in our annual events. We had over 117 nominations this year, and we were recognizing 53 teenagers at our events. And so, we'd like to thank the Sheriff Forum Theater staff, the volunteers, the TOTV staff, as well as Mayor Adam for coming out to recognize our students as we try to encourage volunteerism. We had so many amazing students this year, our Youth of the Years, our Youth of the Year again showed just incredible volunteerism in all parts of Westminster or other community volunteer organizations, and so, we're really thankful for their participation. Next is one of my favorite programs, and one of the ones that I had the opportunity to start next, last year, in collaboration with the Curator Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, CLU, Cano Youth Employment Services, and the school district. We had our second year of community internships training youth, and last year, we had about 20 students placed, and this year, we have almost 50. So, we've seen about a 250% increase in that program. And at our Night of Networking Fair, to explain the program, as well as give students an opportunity to visit with businesses who would be participating, we have where 300 students and parents, as well as counselors, attend that event, which was an unprecedented attendance, I think, for the youth commission, especially for a city. attendance, I think, for the youth commission, especially for a city. And out of the 108 applications that we received, again, we were able to place 49 interns in community-wide businesses and organizations that I think will provide a great experience this summer for our six-week program. Here are some of those business partners that are re-hosting interns. We're really excited to have Sage again, Diamond Ground Products, both of those were really great members last year, and some really great additions, including Assembly Member Irwin's Office, and the Acorn, a lot of other great businesses. The Reserve has been a great partner since the beginning, so we're really excited to be adding to that list and seeing that community businesses are seeing the value of a high school intern over the summer. And we'd like to thank Cindy Kaidle at CLU, because she'll be hosting the curriculum and the Career Skills Course at CLU this summer that goes in conjunction with the internship. And I'd like to move on to youth implementation, which is another one of our annual programs. Every other year, the youth commission holds a youth summit to get opinions from youth about what the biggest problems facing our community youth are, and this year we worked on three of those problems that our youth have identified, which were drug and alcohol awareness, recreation, and environmental issues. And so, in three teams, we had a total of 38 volunteers that helped us to coordinate new programs and events to help mitigate the problems that our youth see in our community. So our drugs and alcohol team, in addition to hosting two reality parties like they did last year in collaboration with Kathleen Mervin from CBUSD, also hosted a really amazing Drugs Facts Chat Day at the Thousand Oaks Teen Center. That was an incredible success. We had a great attendance, and every single student who attended said that they learned valuable information that was helpful and that they would recommend the program to a friend. We were having, we had groups of about 10 to 12 students who discussed topics such as losing someone who was having substance abuse issues, drug addiction and recovery, peer pressure, as well as being a good wingman and taking care of your friends in difficult situations. We even had a parent, or a couple of parents actually call and say that the program might have saved their son and that they could not believe the impact that it had. We're really proud of this program, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to continue it. Oh, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Walshoff for spearheading this program and coming up with everything from the poster to the speakers to the different workshops. It was really a great event, and even though I couldn't attend personally, I heard some great things. Next up is our environmental team, that was led by one of our new commissioners, Commissioner Nash, and they were able to host a cleanup day in collaboration with Supervisor Parks, and that watershed cleanup in Arroyo Canejo Creek ended up collecting 400 pounds of waste, as well as 120 pounds of recycling, and the participating members were able to visit Supervisor Parks' office after to enjoy some lunch and, you know, celebrate their efforts for the day. And in addition, the environmental team created some posters about recycling for our birthday, and we'd like to especially thank our adult liaison, Chris Ball, who has been helpful in the last few years for being such a great resource to us and such a great mentor to the students that participated on the environmental team. And our last team was the recreation team. They again hosted in collaboration with CLU and the Senior Adult Master Plan, the Intergenerational Youth vs. Experienced Sports Exposition, and in this competition, we had senior adults competing with youth in swimming and soccer at CLU. And in addition, they hosted their fourth annual stress-leaving dodgeball event at the Thousand Oaks Teen Center, which was also a great success with, I think, over 110 attendees. So, we'd like to thank our youth outreach worker, as well as one of our adult commissioners, Pete Martinez, who's been really helpful in putting on these events and making sure that they were successful. And we'd like to thank all the youth who came out to support the youth implementation plan. In my four years on the commission, I think this is one of our most successful years of the implementation plan. And lastly, in addition to our role in planning the events and projects that you've heard about tonight, the commission also serves as a liaison to various agencies in the community, and we participate in various outreach activities to encourage schools and agencies to attend and speak at our meetings. Thanks to our Commissioner Katie Owens, we had a range of guest speakers this year at our televised meetings. In total, our six speakers offered a lot of insight into employment, career opportunities, volunteering, and self-esteem, and I really enjoyed Commissioner Owens' lineup that she And I'd like to really quickly recognize Commissioner Shaw, who's been working diligently as our Public Information Chair to expand the youth commission's presence on social media and on ToOx.org. He's renovated ToOx.org/Youth, which is our homepage for everything that the youth commission does, and he started a Twitter and an account, @ToYouth, and an Instagram account, @ThousandOaksYC, both of which have gained a lot of followers and hopefully are expanding the youth commission's presence in the community. And we're continually growing that support by posting about community events and other things that teens might be interested in. So like I said, I think the youth commission had enormous success this year in our programs, events, and initiatives, and in September of 2015, our newly seated commission will set goals to include which implementation programs that we'd like to continue in our next term. The 2014 to 2015 commission would like to recommend that the city council improve implementation of these projects, that the commissioners have a greater focus on outreach and school involvement, excuse me, that we continue the city internship program, that we develop implementation teams and continue to support or host existing programs, such as the Youth vs. Experienced Sports Exposition, Dodgeball Tournament, Cleanup Days, and the Teen Substance Abuse Conference, that we continue to implement annual and biannual programs and serve as effective liaisons, and that we continue to support the updating of CanejoConnections.org. Lastly, I'd like to say thank you to the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and staff, the Canejo Recreation and Parks District, the Canejo Youth Employment Services, especially our adult commissioner, Leigh Anne Petrus, the Canejo Valley Unified School District, all of our partners, donors, and volunteers, and especially our amazing liaison, Francine Spiegel, who I've had the pleasure of working with over the last four years and am going to miss dearly at college, but I'll keep in touch, don't worry. All of our partnerships help make us successful, and I'm really proud of what the youth commission has been able to do this year, and I hope that we'll be able to have a better year next year, even though I won't have the opportunity to serve on the commission, so. And I'm sure Councilmember-elect McCoy that our commissioners look forward to working with you next year, and congratulations on your success in the election. So with that, are there any questions from the council that I can answer?
Thank you, Courtney. Ms. Bill LaPena?
What does it feel like to finally be going to college?
I'm very, very excited to be attending UC Berkeley, and even though the application process was a long and arduous one, I always tell people that it works out in the end and you go where you're supposed to go.
Courtney, from this council member, I want to express my deepest gratitude to the four years of leadership that you have given to the City of Thousand Oaks and its youth. The youth commission has improved quite a bit under your leadership, and I know it was with the assistance and guidance of the remarkable Francine Spiegel, but you really, how shall I put it, you really left your mark and put your mark on the youth commission, and you are to be commended for all the good work that you have done. It's only improved our services that we have for our seniors, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill LaPena. Mr. Price?
Thank you. Courtney, I too need to echo those sentiments. You've done a fantastic job leading this past year. You're a trailblazer. You've done a lot of things here already. You've managed to stir up some very interesting controversy in school. Good for you.
That's to say the least.
Yeah, you are going to go on to do fantastic things. I know it, and I hope you'll keep in touch with the wonderful Francine Spiegel so that we can hear about all the great things that you're doing. Thank you very much for your service here at the residents of Thousand Oaks, and I hope that once you're done with school, unlike my daughter, you'll come back.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Courtney. Congratulations on being accepted to UC Berkeley. That's fantastic. Yeah, it was my honor to present awards to over 50 students at the youth recognition ceremony, and these kids are unbelievable. I mean, they excel in school, and they also work for the community, Hospice of the Canejo, Manny Mansions, Westminster Free Clinic. I don't know how you do it all, but I was really impressed, and I wish you a lot of luck in your college career. And I do want to thank Francine Spiegel for working with our youth commission and our council on aging. I know, Francine, it's a labor of love for you, and it shows, and I know the kids love you, and so do the seniors as well, so thank you for what you're doing for us. Courtney, good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming down tonight. All right, and let's see now, we have a department report on the East County Transit Alliance, and Mr. Mike Houser is going to deliver that to us. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I get into my comments on the specifics of the report, I do want to take a moment to introduce to the city council Alex Poirier. Alex Poirier has been with us since October of last year.
Mike, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you for just a moment. I need to get a motion to accept the youth commission report. Mr. Price?
I'll move to accept the youth commission's report.
All right. It was such a compelling report, I forgot to get the motion. Would everyone vote on that, please?
Motion carries four zero.
All right, I apologize, Mike. Please proceed.
So yes, I would like to take an opportunity to introduce to the council Alex Poirier, who's to my left. Alex has been with us now since October and was hired to assist me with the operations of the transit program. His help in preparing the programs that have been before you tonight has been invaluable, has been his expertise, and he is going to be of the two programs that you previously approved and consent. He's going to be our point person on the Aguirre Hills contract, and will also be working closely with the consultant to push the transit master plan through. The item for you tonight relates to the East County Transit Alliance, and before we get into the meat of it, I do want to comment that this is really sort of a watershed moment for transit in the East County. There has been, at times, a lot of concern about our abilities to work together to improve transit service, but this is exactly the kind of program that this group was formed for, to improve existing services, as well as bring new services to the community that have never existed before. The item before you tonight essentially consists of, besides the seven recommendations, three major items, and that is approval of the program, and the East County Transit Alliance is an MOU between the four East County cities and the county, and we were formed in response to the regional transit plan, which in one of the goals is to improve service countywide, and our purpose is to improve service in the area. The existing intercity ADA service is an informal agreement between the agencies in the East County. It is an optional service that we are not required by law to provide, and annually, the cities and the county collectively spend a little over $400,000 annually to provide approximately 12,000 rides. These are to ADA-qualified cardholders who have met the criteria for the Americans with Disabilities Act service. And it's important to note that we do not receive any funding assistance from the Ventura County Transportation Commission specifically for this program, and this program was the top service improvement priority for the East County Transit Alliance. There are several challenges with the existing program. As each city operates service locally, we all have different service standards, we have different rules, we have different hours, and there's actually three different agencies that are currently providing some portion of the service. There's at least a dozen different fares, and depending on a rider, you could pay a different fare simply based upon the direction of travel in which you are going. And in particular, to Thousand Oaks, because of our location, we're often burdened with providing transfer rides for other cities as those residents pass through our community to get to their final destination. And most importantly, the service is specific to those people with disabilities, but not to seniors, who make up a large percentage of our Dial-A-Ride ridership. This new program is a tremendous step forward in that. Through this program, we are unifying the rules, the hours, the fares. We are giving all residents in the East County a single phone number and a single agency to deal with to make all reservations. The service will be origin to destination. For instance, if you are a Thousand Oaks resident and need to go to a location in Simi Valley, we will take you directly there and pick you up without the need to transfer. Also important is that each agency is paying for those rides for those residents, and so now it is a much more equitable situation in terms of spreading out those costs, and again, most importantly, we are adding service for seniors age 65 and older. There are a few impacts to the existing program. It is, in order to reach an agreement for fares, Thousand Oaks was at the top end of the fare scale for this service, so we have agreed to lower our fares from $6 to $5 for the service. However, other communities are raising their fares from $3 to $5. So again, it's an equitable adjustment. It does necessitate us adjusting some of our billing rates with our existing contracts with the Moore Park in the county, and there will be the additional expense to the city to add the seniors to the program. However, we have secured grant funding to pay for at least the first year's cost in this program. And finally, it does require us to do an amendment with our transit service provider for the additional costs. The fiscal agent agreement simply is the mechanism by which we will operate this service. Thousand Oaks is the lead agency. Thousand Oaks Transit will provide the service using our contract with MV Transportation, and the service is constructed in such a way to protect our interests and ensure that the city is not subsidizing any part of this program. The County of Ventura has approached us and asked us to make some changes to the Canaan Shuttle service by adding Saturday service, and they also want to replicate the successful summer beach bus service that we currently offer. In order to do that, we do need to process an amendment to the contract, and because the intercity rides are more expensive to provide, and we're moving those rides off to another program, we do need to make a slight adjustment to the remaining rides. Again, it's part of inequity to ensure that we're simply charging what it costs us to provide those rides. The contract change will increase the maximum expenditures annually for the transportation contract to a little bit over 4.3 million. It's an net increase of approximately $400,000. It also does modify certain of the performance standards. Staff was very aggressive when we brought the contract to council last year, and we were perhaps a little too aggressive with some of our standards, and it's beginning to impact some of our productivity, so we're adjusting those standards slightly. However, they are still an improvement above the last contract. And as previously mentioned, we have secured roughly in round numbers approximately $100,000 in grant funding to help pay for the increased senior service for the first year. Thousand Oaks and Moore Park jointly applied for this grant funding in anticipation of bringing this eventually to the council for consideration. So our recommendations mirror what's in your staff report, and that's to approve the participation in the program, approve the various agreements that are necessary, amendments, and to also accept the grant for the program, and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Houser. Questions, Mr. Houser? Ms. Bill LaPena?
I would like to reiterate what Mr. Houser mentioned at the beginning of his report. This is a watershed moment in transportation in the City of Thousand Oaks, and I want to commend you and staff for all the work that you have done that went into it and getting over all these obstacles, the hurdles over the last few years, and to reach this moment is actually quite remarkable. It really is. So, I want to say congratulations, and I'm just excited to have this happening, and would like to move this staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Bill LaPena. Yeah, I would agree. It looks like our seniors will be better served, it's going to be cheaper, and our Dial-A-Ride, which I think is our most successful transit program, is going to be even better. So, it's all good. Are the costs being evenly shared amongst Thousand Oaks, Moore Park, Simi, and Ventura County?
Certainly, yes. We're dividing all those costs up equally. Each city pays according to their use of the system, and we are making sure that we are charging overhead that's sufficient to cover the additional staff costs internally to help provide this service.
All right, that's good to hear. All right, we do have a motion. Any further discussion? If not, let's vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Houser. All right. I believe that's the end of our business for this evening, so let us go to our city manager for any follow-up items or comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up items, but I'd like to promote our next city council meeting, which will be on June 23. At this point in time, we have one department report, and that would be certifying the June 2 special election results and swearing in your new colleague. On public hearings, at this point, we have three. Manny Mansions proposal to acquire the Shool Gardens project. Manny Mansions' proposal to acquire the Shoal Gardens project. Landscape and lighting assessment district engineers report for this fiscal year. And then a code amendment to create a streamlined permitting process for small rooftop solar system installations, essentially adhering to the new state laws and rules in that area. And committee reports will have the Cultural Affairs Commission propose community events endowment fund grants for fiscal year 2015, 2016, the annual report from the Cultural Affairs Commission, and a two-year, a proposed two-year work plan from your business roundtable. That's it for city manager follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are through our business for this evening, and we are going to adjourn this evening in memory of Fred Beal. He's the father member, the father of our council member Claudia Bildelapena, and we all give you our deepest consolences, of course, and Claudia would like to give the tribute personally to her dad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, this is not going to be easy, but I will get through this. My father was no ordinary person. He was extraordinary, a true citizen of the world. Fred Beal lived a life filled with adventure, spontaneity and an undeniable free spirit. He had such a dry, quick sense of humor, such a youthful vitality and exceptionally creative mind. Those who worked with him or knew him were in awe of him. Fred was born in the Rhineland during World War II. While his father was an orchestra conductor for the German military, his mother managed to escape the bombs of Allied forces by moving to a different village and pushing his stroller for days. Food came in the form of soup made from potato skin or stinging nettles picked along the way. Fred was almost four years old when his dad, who had eluded capture by Allied forces, returned from the war. His dad Fritz would teach him guitar, trumpet, trombone and piano. The love of music stayed with him throughout his life, a life marked with fierce independence. After receiving his education in mechanical engineering, Fred joined the Luftwaffe, the German air force. He trained with the Pershing missile system at White Sands and met my mother, Maria. They were married two weeks after they met, and when I was born, they moved to Germany. In his homeland, Fred became a highly innovative and international business entrepreneur, primarily specializing in the environment and renewable energy. In a country where rest and relaxation are a given right, Fred would play music and golf to relax, but he would never rest. He was always looking for the next challenge, the next adventure. He worked until his last breath last week, and when he passed, he was surrounded by three of his four children. He is survived by daughters Michelle and me from his first marriage, also survived by Fabienne and Maveen from his second marriage, to Evelyn, to whom he was married for 20 years. Fred also had six grandchildren, the first twins Lana and Zoe, and six weeks, six months after they were born, twins Luca and Dante arrived. The youngest grandchildren are Emily and Lilia, and this is Emily. She will turn three next month, and this picture was taken at Christmas. And this is Lilia, and she will turn two next month. Fred is also survived by his 93-year-old mother, Annaliese, younger sister, Annegret, and younger brother, Gad. Fred's humor, genius and passion for music are evident in his children and grandchildren, who called him Opafred. His sudden death leaves a deep hurt in our hearts, and we miss him more than anyone can imagine.
Thank you, Claudia, and I know I speak for the entire council when we offer you, you and your family, Ron, your mom, Maria, your boys Luca and Dante, our sincere condolences. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to adjourn to our June 23 meeting. Thank you for tuning in, and good evening.